All right, should we get started? Is everyone ready? See Jeremy, are you ready?
We're ready, ready to go, thank you.
Okay, are we recording?
One second.
I heard it when I joined.
Did we confirm that Jeremy? Are we recording?
We're, I'm waiting to find out whether we're live yet, so one second here.
Thank you.
Blessed with your presence, council member, former council member Mandel, good to see you.
You too, but it's just Al now.
Honorable, still, still, still fit.
Our man Al.
Everyone.
It looks like we're good, it looks like we're good to go.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, thank you, everyone. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 8th, 2021 Planning Commission. I'd also like to welcome Al Mandel to the commission, he'll, I think he's gonna say a few things later, so welcome Al, I'm glad you're joining us this evening. This is a special meeting and is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means, consistent with the State of California Executive Order Number 29-20 dated March 17th, 2020. We are conducting the meeting using the Zoom platform and streaming it live on the city website and broadcasting on Comcast Channel 15, as well as via the city YouTube channel. Public members have the opportunity to submit emails to city staff. A report of all written comments was distributed to planning commission members via email and posted to the city's website under documents received after published agenda. And with that, can we please call the role, Ms Chan? Secretary Chan, are you there?
Mary, you're on you.
Oh, I say.
I think I unmuted myself at the same time.
You're doing the roll call this evening, right, okay, thank you.
... tonight in Babson.
Thank you.
Chair Ali Sullivan?
Hi, President, good evening.
Giving your promotion already. Commissioner Bunia?
President, thank you.
Commissioner Goldstein?
I'm here.
Commissioner Mandel?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Okenda?
Here.
And Chair Roach?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, okay, at this time, we'd like to open the public comments. The public comments section provides an opportunity to address the planning commission on items not listed on the agenda. The planning commission welcomes your comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner. Speakers wishing to address the planning commission should limit their comments to three minutes. And now I will ask Mary to moderate the public comment portion of the meeting if we have any. And at the end of the public comments, we'll address any questions that came up. Mary, do you see any?
Thank you, at this time, Commissioner Mandel?
No, thank you, so I just, since this is my first meeting, I wanted to say hello and provide a little explanation because my, my appointment here is a little unusual. So, you know, typically, planning commissioners are appointed for four-year terms and, and that is not what has happened with my appointment. The city council is planning to do a full recruitment for Gary Patton's, you know, eventual replacement as part of the annual interview process coming up in June and July. And they'll be appointing a permanent person to take this seat over, who probably start in, I don't know, August, September, somewhere around there. But in the meantime, they asked if I would be willing to fill in just for a few months. And so I agreed, they appointed me for just an interim emergency appointment. And so I'll be here with you for the next, I don't know, eight or nine meetings until a permanent replacement is found. And if anyone out there is interested in that position, you should be planning to get ready to apply. That'll be opening up in May or June, look for the city clerk announcements coming out. And in the meantime, I'll just say, you know, I know most of you pretty well on staff and the commission. It's just a real honor to be working with all of you. As a former member of council and a current member of planning commission, I feel really comfortable saying that get a strong team here, a really strong team on staff and the commission. And it's just a privilege for me to be able to join you for a few meetings. So with that, thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mandel. Let's see, I, I don't think we have any other comments, do you see any other comments?
That's correct, no other speakers at this time.
Okay, and it looks like we only have one participant besides the panel anyway, so. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comments at this point, and we will move on to our first agenda item of the evening. The proposed establishment of a drive-through coffee shop and convenience store at 28590 Mission Boulevard, requiring approval of a conditional use permit, site plan review and variance for building maximum front and side street setbacks, where a 12-foot maximum is required and where 107 foot to 6 foot and 18 foot 6 are proposed. Okay, let's see, are proposed respectively, application applicant is Tony Singh and Bobender Singh is the owner. So can we hear from staff on this item? Associate Planner Amaro, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. As Commissioner Rose said, tonight we'll be looking at the proposal for a convenient store and a drive-through coffee shop at 28590 Mission Boulevard. The site is approximately 0.73 acres, is located on the the northeast corner of Mission and Tennesse Boulevard. The surrounding properties include E.S. Motors to the north, Salt Dagger Grocery across Tennesse to the south, Mission Heights Apartment to the east and Arco Gas Station across Mission Boulevard to the west. The zoning for the property is Mission Boulevard Quarter Center. The general plan designation is sustainable mixed use. It is approximately 0.17 miles from the, the Bart Station. There is a bus stop fronting the, the gas station. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing building and replace it with two new buildings and landscape, and new landscaping. The applicant would like to face a project. The applicant requires approval of a conditional use permit for the drive-through coffee shop, site plan review for the new buildings and landscaping, and a variance to allow the building to be set back greater than 12 feet from the front and side street setback. Here we have a picture of the existing gas station. The gas station is comprised of auto repair shop that entries in, in the back of the building. And there's a small convenience store that's 300 feet, 350 feet in, in the remaining portion of the building, along with two bathrooms and, and an office. This is a picture of what the applicant is proposing for the site. As you can see, there's a, a new convenience store located here and also a drive-through coffee shop that's located here. Here's the elevation of the proposed convenience store. It has large storefront windows with metal, metal awnings. Its entry is accented by a higher building wall with a panel wood along the frontage. This is the layout of the convenience store. It's a floor area or the building footprint is 2,763 square feet. The sales area is 11,900, 11,093 square feet. They provide a bathroom within the, the store itself. This next slide shows the drive-through coffee shop. It has a similar type of architectural style with large storefront windows and a metal awning. The colors are all earth tones. This next slide shows the layout of the drive-through coffee shop. This coffee shop will be strictly takeout. They had the option of driving through and picking up their refreshments or walking through the front door and ordering at, at the counter. There is no indoor seating in the building, it is strictly a takeout facility. The drive-through lane will be located towards the rear of the property. As you can see, the residential units above it is quite far from the drive-through, the proposed drive-through lane. The top of the bank is around 50 feet above the, the, of the, the grade of the drive-through lane and the, the, the residential units themselves is around 103, 130 feet setback from the drive-through lane. Here we can see the layout of, of the proposed buildings. Building A is where you have the, the convenience store. Building B is where you have the drive-through coffee shop. The, the drive-through lane is located on the north side of the property and will run behind the convenience store and exit between the convenience store and the drive-through coffee shop. A row of trees will provide some screening for the drive-through lane and also the back of the, or the rear of the buildings. The site will be fully landscaped with a drought-tolerant planting. The drive-through restaurant requires the approval of a conditional use permit. And one of the requirements is that the drive-through restaurant or coffee shop has to be at least a half-mile radius from it, from another drive-through restaurant or, or coffee shop. In this case, there is a McDonald's that is located, you know, a little over a mile from the proposed drive-through coffee shop to the north and to the south. There's a Burger King that's about 0.6 miles away from the proposed drive-through coffee shop to the, to the, to the west is, I believe, I believe it's a Jack-in, Jack-in-the-box and it's a, a little over a mile from the proposed drive-through coffee shop. This map also shows in green the other locations of the Starbucks coffee shops in the city of Hayward. The green dots with the cups indicate those facilities or those locations also have a drive-through as part of their, their restaurant. As you can see, the, see, the proposed drive-through coffee, coffee shop will be servicing the Mission Boulevard, Boulevard Quarter. There's also a drive-through coffee shop along Hesperian that also provides service for the Hispar, Hisparian Boulevard Quarter. The other thing that the applicant is applying for is a variance on the front setback. In order to, for staff to recommend approval for variance, one of the findings that we have to make is that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, the park fee, location, or surroundings or other physical constraints. There's, there are several physical, physical constraints on this property as the property is already developed and has complied with development standards that were in place in 1971. It has, it meets all those development standards. However, the developments standards have changed over the past years. And now there's a requirement that the buildings be located no more than 12 feet from the front and side property lines. We have some physical constraints in that we have an existing gas dispenser pump station here. We have underground, underground storage tanks here. We have a so, Neil, so, Neil, easement here. This was recently put in when they put in the retaining walls along Tennesse Road. This area supports the, the retaining walls and you cannot locate any structures on top of it. The applicant is basically locating the, the convenience store in the same location of the previous building. He is adding the, the drive-through coffee shop on the side here. But as you can see, the, the coffee shop is going as close to the, the streets, street, side street, oh, excuse me. The side street property line as it can. There's other things too that makes it difficult to locate the, the convenience store or, or the coffee shop along the frontage here is that you already have circulation established and between the circulation established for the gas tank trucks and also for the, the garbage trucks. You have the connections between the storage tanks and the pumps that are not easily able to be just moved around on the site. So these are some of the physical constraints and the reasons why staff supports the variance. If we were to, this is the Starbucks drive-through coffee shop on Hesperian. If we were to apply the standards in the Mission Boulevard code, where you required the, the buildings be located no, no more than 12 feet from the, the front or side street property line. This is something, this is what it would look like. Because of the nature of the, the gas station and the coffee shop, they were all, you know, if you, the backsides of the buildings would face Tennesse Road and Mission Boulevard. And you can see over here, they have the, the pickup for the Starbucks coffee here and you have the drive-through lane in front of the building and you have Hesperian Boulevard, Boulevard along here. And so the, though, these standards of having the buildings up close to the, the street may be more applicable to condominium development or some kind of retail development that can have their front doors facing Mission Boulevard. But because of the nature of a gas station, you have the pumps on the other side is gonna follow that the front doors to the, the convenience store is gonna be facing inward and the back sides of the, the building will be facing Mission Boulevard. In addition, even if we, this was implemented, it still would not be meet the 12-foot minimum, maximum setback because the, the drive-through lane cannot be located in the, the front setback and the drive-through lane is 12 feet. And there's a five-foot planter that's required between the, the driveway and, and the, the building. So that comes up to 17 feet, so. If we, if this, the, the site was a vacant lot and somebody came in, that the applicant came in and proposed something like this, they still would have to require, they would still have to ask for variance on this, the maximum setback. Again, you know, this is this is much more appealing than looking, looking at this. And so it may be a more, more appropriate design for this intersection. You know, it's, it's a major intersection between two arterial roads, Mission Boulevard and Tennesse Road. The other thing that the, the applicant is proposing is that he be able to do this project in phases. The first phase would consist of demolition of the existing building and the addition of a temporary kiosk on the site so that he can continue operating the gas station. A construction fence would separate the, the rear of the property and allow the gas station to continue operating. He would be using a prefab, pre-manufactured structure, modular structure for the temporary cells kiosk and it would remain until the construction was, is completed. It would be providing a portable toilet facility as well with these temporary, with the temporary kiosks. The second phase would be, would consist of the construction of the two buildings and all the other site improvements towards the rear of the property. Once that is completed, then the, the front landscaping would be, would be put in. And then the, the, the project could be open to the public. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for the, for the drive-through coffee shop, the site plan review for the new buildings and landscaping and the variance on the setback based on the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval and find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of CECLR pursuant to Section 15332 infill. This concludes my presentation, are there any questions? By the way, there was no, we did not receive any public comments on this application.
Great, thank you Associate Planner Amaro for that presentation. And now I'll take, let's take questions from the commissioners. And just a reminder to save your, reserve your opinions for after this portion so that the public has a chance to comment before we give our opinions on the matter. So with that, I'm just gonna take questions by commissioners as I see hands being raised. And I see Commissioner Ali Sullivan has his hand up first, if you wanna go ahead, Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you Chair, I'm just curious for the city, is there any, any presentation by the applicant? Or is the applicant on?
I, I do see the applicant on, I wasn't sure, Associate Planner Amaro, did they plan on making a presentation?
No, yes, I'm here, this is Tony Singh, but we don't have any presentation, we will just explain the project verbally.
Okay, thank you, and if you, if you wanna say a few words, now's a good time and then commissioners might have questions for you as well.
Okay, good evening, Commissioner, this is Tony Singh and we are project consultants, working with the city staff probably since last more than two years. And first of all, we are very thankful to the city staff, they work with us and this is a day which we are waiting anxiously and we have gone through all the documents pertaining to this project, all the conditions of approval and we will comply with all the conditions as the project moves into the next phase. And I'll be happy to answer or explain any, any questions from the commissioners, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Okay, let's go back to Commissioner Ali Sullivan, did you have questions for the staff or the applicant?
Yeah, a couple very quick ones for, for city staff. First off, I didn't see any of the reports, I may have missed it, but I didn't see any, in any of the attachments, any revenue generation estimates or tax estimates. Do we have any sense of what sales tax revenue we might be able to derive from this project?
I did not do any economic analysis of this, I believe generally they're required when they go to the, the, the city council. So I didn't prepare one, any analysis on it.
That's fine, I, I would, I would assume that it'll generate more now, or sorry, it'll generate more post-project than it would presumably current, in its current state for the city. Let's see, the second question, the seating inside of the Starbucks, is there a reason why there's no customer space inside of the store? This is the first time I've seen a Starbucks like that. That's not just a drive-through, but actually has a space where folks can walk inside. And I see it does have a bathroom inside, so I would, I think that it would meet the requirements to, to have seating inside, but is it a choice of the applicant or was that a requirement to the city?
I think there is difficulty in that if you provided seating, then you would have to provide more parking. And so, you know, I think the, the idea is that you would have people that would be driving through on Mission Boulevard and be able to have the choice of either going to, to the drive-through lane and getting a cup of coffee from Starbucks or going into the convenience store itself and buying un-bran, unbranded coffee. Certainly, the people that are filling up gas can also walk up to the Starbucks, Starbucks drive-through coffee shop and purchase coffee, you know, it's just not a site where you would stay and linger. The, the parking is not provided for that. It's provided for, what's there is provided for quick purchases. And, and so that's the, the, the way it was designed. It is, it is somewhat surprising that there's no, that Starbucks would not require seating within, but you know, that was, what was proposed and I don't know, you may want to ask the applicant because they are the ones that deal directly with Starbucks and staff hasn't had any interaction with them.
Got it, thank you. And actually, for the applicant, the last question I had, have the tenants of either of the, of the buildings that are going to be put on site presumably, have they been secured or are they just aspirational at this point?
Actually, the convenience store, it will be run by the owner applicant, Mr. Bobendersen, who he's with me yesterday, and he's owning that store since last 12 years. And Starbucks has provided us the letter of intent, but they are waiting on the planning commission decisions until they, they can finally. So, and about the set in, this idea came from Starbucks team. Probably they did some kind of marketing research and found like they will just have a drive-through customers or the walk-ins. And because of the, the site has also concrete constraints, like we are putting huge retaining walls. If the difference between the Mission Heights Apartments and the site is 15 feet plus. So we had side constraints and as Mr. So, we had side constraints and as Mr. Carl Amura mentioned, there is a swell nail easement. Which we provided for the construction of Tennyson Boulevard, Tennyson Road. So those are like some side constraints, so we were just able to put this side of the building. And Starbucks agreed to that because they said, okay, they are fine, they will just live with the walkthrough customer and the breakthrough. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, let's go to Commissioner Benia.
Perfect time to call on me, I have a horn honking. Let me close the door. So, um, I just had, I had a few similar questions, so. Um, I actually work in Pleasanton, so off of Barnell Road, there's another Starbucks, that's a drive-through only, but the queuing is absolutely crazy. And I know that there's other places, I think there's a Starbucks in Hayward, I'm not even sure if that's drive-through only. But I know that the one by Costco, the queuing is also very interesting. So I had a few questions. First, starting with the city attorney, um, I live at eight, seven, two Douglas Street and it's, I think, about. Half a mile away from this location, the whole five hundred feet versus a thousand feet, I really don't know about, so. Is it okay if I make comments on this, understanding where I live in the proximity to this project?
Yeah, so if your house is that far away, I mean, you're over the thousand feet, so there's a presumption. That there's no economic interest there, so it wouldn't be a conflict unless you have some sort of economic interest in Starbucks. I think you're fine.
Thank you. My only interest is, um, it's about half a mile from my house, so I run in front of that place all the time. And when I run in front of the gas station, just even people coming in off of Mission sometimes are very eager to get into the gas station. So, um, I, I really can't even understand the queuing with the Starbucks there, cuz I know it'd be a part of that queue. So I guess the question that I have is, um, related to pedestrian and vehicular service, uh, I guess circulation. In particular, my concerns are about, is there enough space to do queuing there? I mean, I know that there's, you know, diesel trucks parked in the back all the time. But I'm just wondering about sideways blockages and other kind of circulation around Mission when it's already so clogged. So, can either the city or the staff maybe address the concerns around? How that would work and how sidewalks wouldn't be blocked and how Mission wouldn't become further congested with. All of the dev- all of the development that's already happening there. You know, I think this is a perfect spot for Starbucks, I'm just very concerned about, you know, how things are gonna move down Mission when. We have such a, you know, gem on a corner of such a busy intersection.
Well, for one thing, uh, those big rigs will not be there any longer and. The uh, a traffic study was done for uh this application. The report came back and said that there, that. There would be sufficient parking during, during the morning rush hour, though there is only eight. Parking word, only eight cars can be accommodated, accommodated in the drive-through lane. An additional five cars can be accommodated between the front property line. On Mission Boulevard and the. The beginning of the queuing lane, um, they would be located, the cars would be located on the, along the. North property line, uh, there's enough space to allow both cars going into the. To get into the, the area for the gas pumps, uh, and the parking spaces as long, as well as cars. Queuing on the side, along the planter on the north side of the, the property. There also is a possibility that, uh, you know, if, uh, there's a lot of, uh, an overflow of cars. We certainly don't want cars to be backing up on Mission, there's the possibility of maybe. Closing one of the uh lanes for the gas and having cars. Line up in, in those lanes. There's, uh, you know, the things I've observed with fast food restaurants, especially during the pandemic. Is that they will have somebody outside taking orders to help facilitate the, um, moving the. The, uh, you know, cars to the drive-through quicker. The other thing that, uh, and that's something that the traffic engineer recommend, recommended. The other thing that, uh, uh, may be helpful is also having more staffing during those peak hours. So they can, you know, make those drinks quicker to get those cars out faster. They may have to look at their staffing, they may have to have additional people making the drinks and one person dedicated to heating up the food. To get those, those. People moving through the drive-through quicker. Now, you also have to realize too that, uh, the convenience store will also. Service people purchasing coffee and, um, you know, snacks as well. So not everybody will be using the queuing lane to purchase coffee. People who are filling up gas has have the option of going into the, the uh convenience store. And buying unbranded coffee or they can walk over to Starbucks to purchase coffee. So, that may help reduce the, the stacking as well, you know, it's difficult to see. Uh, I think too, the other thing too is that you'll have a, um, because there's a bus stop there. You, you probably have customers getting off the bus, going to Starbucks, getting their, their drinks. Walking across Mission Boulevard, heading for bar, so, uh, you know, there's, there's means to. Solve some of the queuing issues, should it hap- should happen. But we won't really know until it takes place and, you know, the pandemic certainly has a. Increased the queuing lines at fast food restaurants and hopefully. When more options available, you start to see these uh queuing lines shorten.
Thank you. Um, I, I think that's my biggest concern and I'm not even sure that the constraint with the queuing line is staffing. The constraint might be other things, right? Might, it might be, you know, their ability to produce the amount of drinks that they need cuz they don't have enough. You know, machines to do it. I think my, my bigger concern is just about when you come into that area. You know, you're coming down Mission, you can get in and you have a bus stop there and we talked about that. You also have these big tanker trucks coming in that are gonna need to fill these underground tanks. And at the same time, you're doing this all on a very busy intersection, so. I, I think queuing is still a pretty big concern that, that I have. Um, the other question that I have is. I noticed a lot of other pieces of this parcel would be, were being upgraded, you know, the, the coffee shops being added, the convenience store. I saw in some of the pictures, the current state of what that seventy-six, what the gas pumps look like, might be different than the renderings we saw today. So is part of this also upgrading the gas part of this to be more modern with the rest of what's gonna be on this parcel? Cuz it looked like that in the pictures, it just didn't specify that in the report.
I'll let the, uh, Mr. Singh, uh, address that question.
Yeah, actually, uh, seventy-six, uh, they recently upgraded their systems to meet the. Ongoing EPA standards. So that's the reason and the underground storage tanks, those are double lined already. And there is no environmental issue so far. So, so that's the reason we are not touching the fueling system for now. So it will stay as it is, but there are, there are chances as, as we progress, uh, there might be. Some modern dispensers coming on, uh, coming up and those have to be installed. And additionally, there will be two EV charging stations also for the quick charging. So, and uh, as Mr. Carl explained, like this site is a kind of. Uh, I will, we cannot compare, uh, Apple to Apple with the other Starbucks, just selling the coffee. So we have so many options, so we can fuel up the autos and then at the same time, we can have some coffee to fuel up ourselves. Then there is an option to walk into the convenience store, walk up to the coffee. And both buildings have the public restrooms, uh, so that is another convenience. Uh, so I mean, um, there are so many options not to queue up. Plus, with the underground storage tanks area, it's a kind of open space. So whenever, uh, the cameras will be installed and definitely. Every business wants to catch the customers and think about their convenience. So during peak hours, Starbucks can, uh, put more staff, add some more, uh, equipment. So that they can dispose of, uh, the customers very quickly and, uh, but don't face any problem. Because it's a kind of thumb rule, once the customer is not unhappy, so he will never come back. So that's the sales, uh, principle. So we are confident like it, it will not happen, but still city has controls. I mean, anytime there are, there are, uh, city feels like we are not complying, there are some issues. And, uh, yeah, definitely the gas can be run at half that capacity during, during, during peak hours. So there are so many options, we will be happy to work with the city in future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So my question was really around the upgrades to the gas station pump. So if, if you go back to the staff's presentation, the existing site shows what I ran past today. The perspective site, including site improvement, shows a different kind of gas station there. My question is, is the upgrades to the gas pumps a part of the upgrades that are required for the approval? The approval of this permit? Or are we saying that we're hoping that those gas pumps will be upgraded, but we're gonna modernize the Starbucks and the convenience store? Do you hear my question, Carl?
And Commissioner Benia, it, it, sorry to interrupt you, but I, I think you mean the physical above ground, not the below ground pumps, correct?
Yeah, that's the, that's the Associate Planner Amara, I answer the question, thank you guys.
That was not a, a part of the application, uh, typically, uh. Gas stations will periodically upgrade their, um, their canopies and their, their pumps. But, uh, this was not part of the, the application, but again, it's something that, uh, the, uh. You know, the, um, you know, the corporate headquarters come up, come up with new, uh. Graphics or signage for the facilities, uh, and, uh. At some point, uh, those things will be upgraded, but they were not part of this application, just the buildings. And the landscaping were, uh, part of this, uh, application. But I, I think, uh, in the future, because there are a seven, seventy-six gas station, at some point. Those pumps and the canopy will be upgraded.
Thank you. Cuz again, that goes back to my point with queuing, when I got gas there today, it, those pumps weren't working well, so I put in my credit card three times. So the point being is that if we're not able to move people past these gas lines quickly, to think that we're gonna shut one down to create more queuing space. For Starbucks would be something that I would actually like to see written with maybe some conditions that say. If cars get to this point, we're shutting down this to make sure that it doesn't cause traffic on Mission. And with all of the development that's happening on Mission, very much adjacent to this particular development. I think it's important that we watch traffic flow and we understand the congestion that could be queuing with all these things coming together. Uh, my next question is, I think with ED, what, what is it, like thirty-one or three or something? But it said that, you know, there's gonna be some kind of economic advantages that come with this particular development. Um, in terms of jobs, do we know how many jobs this is gonna create for Hayward residents? Cuz I mean, that's one of our special reasons for approving this is because there's gonna be economic benefits. So I was just wondering, I know we talked about it in terms of taxes, but what about in terms of employment generation?
Well, typically, um, this, from my experience with other Starbucks. Applications is that, uh, though we indicated that there would be four staff persons on the. In our staff report, uh, Starbucks actually hires more part-time workers. To staff their, uh, their coffee shops and I, I, I sort of recall that, uh. The Hispanician. Drive-through coffee shop, um, they indicated they were gonna like have thirty part-time employees. With that facility, um, I suspect that, uh, because of the size of this. Drive-through coffee shop, it, it is not a small, uh, space that they will have more than two employees. Within that, uh, that complex, especially in the early morning, it may taper off to, you know. To towards the latter part of the day, but, uh, I, I expect, uh, as, uh, you know. They, they see the, um, volume of traffic they create, that they would increase the staffing. So it's very hard to say what the convenience store, uh, is likely to be two, two persons. From what I, uh, what I've observed, um, you know. Working on any shift, uh, but they are planning to, um, open twenty-four hours a day. So that would mean at least three shifts and that would be six persons, so. No matter what, it's going to increase the number of employees, um, at that, uh, development. Over what's already existing, currently existing at the site.
Thanks, Carl, and I'm very excited about the economic growth that will come with this, but it leads me to my next question, which is around parking. So it says in the, um, report that we got that though, they're gonna add nine parking spaces to the site. Including one ADU vans and bike racks, um, there's parking there today. So when this said in addition, in addition to how many?
The, the whole site will be, uh, redeveloped in terms of the, the layout. And so there will be a total of nine parking spaces. We have done for others, other, um, gas stations where there is a, a convenience market. We have included the parking areas, um, in front of the gas dispensers. In terms of meeting their parking requirements. Now, in this Mission Boulevard. Code. Commercial properties do not have a, um, a minimum parking requirement. Unlike our older zoning districts, like a general commercial, they have to comply with the off-street regulations. Now, if we look at the. Say that this property was on general commercial and we looked at the off-street parking regulation. Based on the number of employees, um, you have to have one parking space for, uh. The number of employees under largest shift, plus you have to have a one parking space for the, the water and the air. Parking space and then, uh, for the convenience market, you have to provide one parking space. For every four hundred square feet of, um, floor area. When I did that calculation, I came out to sixteen parking spaces would be required. If this was on general commercial, again, the, in the form, uh, the mission code, they leave it up to the. Owner to decide, uh, you know. The amount of parking space that will be required for his, uh, his business. But they do meet the minimum parking space if you are basing it on the. Off-street parking regulations and as I said before, uh, we have used the parking spaces. uh fronting the gas uh dispensers to uh meet the parking requirements as well, so.
Thank you, Carl. So Carl, just to make sure I have this right, and sorry, I'm just trying to get all this correct in my head. So we're gonna have a gas station in which we're counting the, the gas dispensers as parking spaces. We're gonna upgrade a convenience store, if you will, and add a Starbucks. And the staff at Starbucks have to park and the community can choose to drive to Starbucks because they can walk up to the, you walk up to the stand to get their coffee or whatever. And we're talking about nine parking spots in total, including all the gas stuff and the workers and the potential people from the city coming through to park their car and pick up their coffee. Cause I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding these nine correctly, because I went there today, I counted over nine and every single one was filled.
Well, uh, these um.
And I counted more than nine today, just to be more precise, because I don't want you to go there and recount. There was more than nine, Carl. So I'm just wondering how this whole nine comes into play when you have so much more traffic there, because my mom already said she's gonna go there. I'm gonna go there and I'm like, and we may not choose to sit in line. So how does this whole nine parking stalls work?
Well, you have to remember, these are all quick purchases. They're not something that you linger in the store to, to uh find what you want. They basically have a, an assortment of uh of beverages and they also have, you know, snack food. So you don't have, it's not like you're going to go, going grocery shopping and spend, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes or even half an hour shopping for food.
But you can spend that time in Starbucks. So I guess my bottom line.
Well, the Starbucks, Starbucks uh.
Nine parkings, right? All together.
Starbucks doesn't have seating, so uh it's not likely that they're gonna spend a, a lot of time in the, in, in, in the, in the store, yeah. And um.
So I guess for everything.
Pardon?
It's just nine parkings period, right?
It's nine parking, nine, um what I would call um nine standard parking spaces.
I'm gonna park on Mission and you're certainly not gonna park on Texas and going up there. So I would say nine parking in general, just to be more specific.
Yeah, nine standard parking spaces and some uh what is it, uh informal parking spaces in front of the uh gas dispensers? Because oftentimes, people will get their gas and run into the convenience store to buy a drink. And so, you know, they will also be parking there. Now, from what I noticed at convenience markets, the uh cars that go in, go in and uh leave fairly quickly. So um you know, we, we, we won't know. Also, the other thing too, I, I don't know if the auto repair is still functioning now. But the auto repair, if there's cars there that have been sitting there for a while, that's not gonna happen when the convenience store opens, because the convenience store will not have any auto repair. And the other, uh the other thing I was thinking of is that um yeah, the, the auto repair, you can expect cars to be there a, a longer period of time while they are working on the cars. Uh but you would not expect that if you're um coming uh for a convenience store, for a car to be uh parked for a long period of time, they will be in and out in a few minutes. So not that, you know, um you shouldn't be concerned about it. It is a concern and I, I wish there was more parking. Uh but uh, you know, typically, um you know, they will have to manage the parking, um parking, otherwise people won't be uh going to their, their, um the convenience store if they can't find parking and.
They'll just queue on Mission. I mean, I do.
They can't queue on Mission because you're next to a bus stop. And so, you know, they start, if they start queuing a mission that uh, you know, we will, we will get after them to figure out a solution to the queuing problem. As I mentioned again, they may not want to, but they may have to be using those uh gas pump lanes for queuing during the uh early morning hours. Uh there is a kind of an area over the uh underground storage area where, you know, cars can sit, you know, and wait in line. But uh, uh until it starts operating, we don't know exactly, you know, how many people are gonna go to Starbucks versus going hopping into the uh convenience store to buy a, a less expensive drink. Uh if they see a line, a queuing line, they may uh opt to just go in the convenience store and purchase the drink or you know, park for a few minutes, walk into the Starbucks store, get their drink and move on. I also feel that because of the proximity of the bus stop and the um proximity to Bart, that you are ex- the store will experience having customers uh who come off the bus to buying snacks or drinks before they head on to, to Bart and um. But again, you know, it's hard to tell. Uh the traffic study says uh five additional parking stalls is sufficient. Uh you know, for uh the early morning rush and or thirteen um thirteen, a queue lane for thirteen cars is sufficient for the morning, uh early morning rush. Uh we have to wait and see. I mean, you, you can.
Can we move on to allow other commissioners to ask some questions? We're getting kind of repetitive here.
All right, thanks, everyone. Yeah, I was just gonna chime in. I just wanted to make sure Commissioner Benia didn't have any further questions.
I didn't. That was my last one. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um so, so the aesthetics, um you know, the idea of approving the additional setback and the arguments for the aesthetics will make sense. Um but the question that I had was around the uh garbage collection site. Um in addition to the standard mitigation, um I didn't see anything that it included uh containment of the garbage uh height and or mitigation in terms of uh of that uh of the wall perhaps being covered with uh shrubbery. Did I miss that or uh are, are those in there or is it something that can be contemplated by the applicant?
Well, I think the uh, the landscape plan shows uh planting around the uh, um the trash enclosure. Uh the trash enclosure has to have a roof because it has food inside, so you know, you couldn't make it lower. Uh but typically, uh we will require shrubs planted around the perimeter of the, the trash enclosure. I didn't look um specifically at what plants were uh specified, but there are plenty around the uh, the trash enclosure.
Okay, that'll probably be sufficient. My, my worry is that as we're driving by that the otherwise decent aesthetics would be interrupted by the obvious presence of garbage collection site. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mendel.
No, thank you, Chair. Um let me start with two quick questions for the um applicant and um well, first, let me say I submitted a number of questions in writing in advance and I want to thank staff for taking the time to answer those in detail. And it did resolve most of the questions that I had, except for a couple. Um but first to the applicant, so uh one of the uh statements in the answers that came back was about um EV charging stations, electric vehicle charging stations. And uh the statement is, though not required, the owner has indicated that the site will be provided with two electric charging stations. So my question to the applicant is, do you have any objection to that being uh added as a condition of approval, that there be two EV charging stations?
Oh, we don't. Uh we agree to add two EV charging stations.
Cool. That's a, that's an easy one that we can talk about later. Um and then the, the question to the applicant, you know, in um in the project plans on page thirteen, there's a picture of the current site and it shows uh twenty-six, by my count, twenty-six conventional parking spaces. Um and there are twenty-two cars, twenty-two vehicles parked on the site. So that's a lot more than nine. So to the applicant, I'm gonna give you a moment to talk about why that shouldn't be a concern if it is, if you don't think it should be, in your opinion. The twenty-two, you know, there's a lot of cars there now and we're shrinking the number of parking, so I foresee a problem.
Yeah, basically, uh what I can say is the, uh there are three parking spaces in front of the store. If we look at the plan number, page number thirteen, plan sheet number thirteen. Uh and one is, one is the uh disabled parking space uh towards east side of the store. So these four parking spaces are catering to the convenience store customers right now. Uh so as Mr. Carl Amura said, and this uh we have an auto lube shop right now working over there. And every car has to wait for longer hours, even if the car is repaired, the owner might not be able to pick it up until late evening hours or maybe in for a day or so. So the parking behind uh the existing building and towards the north, it, it is basically catering to the uh, the autos which, which are there for the repairs. Uh and this, this is a kind of repair shop. Uh I mean, uh it's not quick in and out like we have speedy. But there are repairs being undertaken and this activity will be gone. And uh so that's why we are confidently saying, and another thing which we explained in our uh in our response today is uh the employees which will be employed, maybe four to six employees at a time. Uh so those will be required to uh use the public transit or uh park the cars at some other public uh on-street parking which is available legally so that uh our parking spaces are available for the customers. So this, I can sum up like uh in against.
So is that kind of a, pardon the interruption, uh so is that kind of an implicit acknowledgement that's like provide part for them to get best?
Uh yeah, I mean, uh as per the code, we are required to show uh two earmark parking for the employees. But uh we, as, as an owner, uh we can always put a condition to the employees like we are not aligned with our personal cars parked there for longer hours. So it, the parking is just for the good in and out customers.
All right. Okay, I, I appreciate that. The, the clarification that the parking is to the east and the north, which is often has a lot of cars, is mostly auto cars, uh uh the repair yard cars. That's helpful. I appreciate that. Um and then it sounds like the, actually, there's eight parking spots in the front, right in front of the convenience store and where the air and water. And so I'm sort of guessing that those are typically the ones that are used by the the sort of in-and-out customers of the convenience store and the air and water for tires, right?
Yeah, yes.
That's, that's helpful. Thank you. So to staff, a few um, a few questions. Um if we, if, if you could display page thirteen of the staff presentation, it's the uh trying to bring it up here. It shows the circulation. It's a, a physical constraints is the um title. Bringing that up, Carl? Yeah, there we go. So page thirteen. And while you're bringing that up, the question I'm gonna ask is, is if you could use your, your mouse, your pointer um on page thirteen, slide thirteen, physical constraints, to show me where, where the uh, the overflow queue would, would extend. Uh because you were talking about, you know, conventional parking spaces and sort of implying that there's additional space for overflow or parking or overflow queues. So to kind of point that out to me, if you could. Is it clear what I'm asking, Carl? Mr. Amura?
You're muted, Mr. Amira, if you wanna unmute.
Yeah, let me get to the page.
Yeah, that one. So you can see the end of the drive-through line and it sounded like you were suggesting that there's room for another three or four cars to be in the queue in the drive-through line behind there, which I can kind of see, except that it overlaps with the turning area for cars that are getting into the pumps. And so it seems that if there were twelve cars in the drive-through line, for example, and that extended all the way to the sidewalk approximately, that it would be very, very difficult for cars to turn into the gas pumps. Your thoughts on that?
Well, I measured the distance between the, the gas pump and the um, the um landscape planter and that's, it was twenty-five feet. Now for uh.
Where are you talking about? Which distance? You're talking about on the north side?
Yeah, from here to here is twenty, twenty-five feet. Now, for a, a single lane, it's twelve feet. If you have a double lane, it's twenty feet. So there's more enough, more than enough space uh for you to have, for you to have two cars side by side, going in the same direction. And uh so there is, there's still, still space to access these cars here as well as to park here and fill up for gas.
Okay. You already talked about the drive, the, the drive, the queue spilling out into Mission Boulevard and your confidence that that will not happen. Probably have some comments about that later. Um so the employee indicated in the written answers to the, to the questions as well as verbally a moment ago, that employees will be instructed or required to not park on the site, which is unusual. Um but suppose that, that, you know, that that's done. Where, where would they park then if not on the site? Where is there, where is the nearest street parking? Cause there isn't any on Tennesse, I believe. And then I'm not sure there is any on Mission in front of the gas station. So where would they end up parking? Can you, can you?
Well, there's a, there's no parking on Tennesse and there's no parking on Mission on the side of the street that the gas station is located. However, across the street on Mission, on the west, west side of Mission, there are uh parking is allowed on that street, on that side of the street. And uh of course, you know, there's a bus station there, um a bus stop there, uh there's Bart nearby. So there's a, you know, possibly of um uh employees coming, using public transportation.
Yeah, I, I took the possibility of that, but that's not something we can rely on. I think we have to assume that most of them will drive there with a car.
Yeah, there, there is parking, there is parking on the, the west side of Mission Boulevard. You just don't have it on the east side where the.
And when you say the west side, do you mean, sorry to keep interrupting, I'm just trying to get a clear uh sense of what staff's thinking is here. Do you mean north of uh Tennesse Boulevard or south of Tennesse Boulevard?
On either side.
Well, the, the parking on south of Tennesse, on Mission Boulevard, on the west side and the south of Tennesse is reserved for Bart. Um and so it's not publicly available parking, period. So that can't be counted. So is there parking on?
It's reserved for Bart?
Yes, sir. Yep. One hundred percent from six AM until four PM every day. So, and so the only parking that might be available, since there isn't any in front of this particular business. And so the only parking that might be available, since there isn't any in front of this particular business. And there's a bus stop there. As you indicated, it's going to be on the other side of Mission, across Mission on the west side in front of. The seven, not the seventy, whatever the station, the other gas station is on the, to the, to the west.
The Arco.
Thank you, the Arco. But there's no parking in front of that, I believe, because it's a bunch of driveways. So.
Yeah, that's a turn lane.
Yeah, if I, if I could just, there is, if you, I mean, the closest parking it seems like to me would be Eastern Thirteenth Street. Which is an offshoot of Tennesse when you turn off of Mission there. So.
Let's, you guys, let's hold on for. Mr. Martin, is there someone from the city that can talk to the traffic study that happened? So maybe someone can answer that question? Sorry, Commissioner Mendel, go ahead.
That's okay. I think I'm going to pause that and put that question on hold, but. To give you a little time to do some research or get some help or whatever, but it would be something that we should be clear about before the commission makes any decisions later. And then a couple of little questions. Does the convenience store have a tobacco retailer's license and an alcohol license? Maybe the applicant knows the answer. Just a yes or no.
It has tobacco, but not the alcohol.
Okay, tobacco, said tobacco, but no alcohol?
Yeah, no alcohol.
And then, as I recall, and I don't remember the details, but the form based codes prohibits. Some or all types of tobacco retailer licenses. And I'm just wondering if, you know, if this were being built new. Which it kind of is, you know, full tear down and rebuild, would a tobacco license be allowed in the form based code zoning district?
Well, this, they will still be maintaining a convenience shop in the temporary kiosk. So their. Cigarette license would still be active. And it's only if they terminated their cigarette license. Then they, they would not be able to. Renew it in the future.
I understand that. So I understand that they'd be grandfathered in and maintained as an ongoing use through the, the temporary retail site. And that makes sense. I'm totally allowed. But my question is, if this were, are tobacco retail license allowed in form based codes in general? Like if this were being brand new, built brand new on a different site, would a tobacco retailer license be allowed? Is it a permitted use?
I believe it is, is not allowed in the, the Mission Boulevard code. I'd have to double check, but I believe it is no longer allowed.
Yeah, I, I think you might be right about that. It might be worth checking before, you know, we come to our, our decision points. And then. The last question, while the form based code zoning does not. Include a minimum parking levels, that doesn't mean that the city and the commission is unable to require. Parking spaces, right? It just means that the code itself doesn't specify by some sort of formula. A minimum number of spaces that it's up to staff for the planning commission to set the, the required number. Set, set accurate.
I can, I can help out with that. So when we adopted the form based code, you're correct. Commissioner Mendel, that we, we did leave some amount of flexibility to be determined on an as needed basis by use. So there is no parking minimum that is required, but it was also not the assumption that no parking would be required. So. Ideally, you know, what, what we pretty much left to, and that was really the result of the economic development analysis. That we, that we did, that, and the study basically showed that. We, you know, that applicants wanted the option to be able to park as needed or what the need or what the use would, would necess, would, would necessitate. But yeah, you're correct. There's no, there's no specific use requirement and it was really, it was really meant to be on a case by case basis.
Thank you. That's, that's perfect. Thank you. And that's.
Needed.
Sorry, who's? Who's talking?
Yeah, you're correct. There's no. And really, it was really meant to be.
I don't know if the delay is on my connection or. Yeah. So Jeremy, thank you. You answered the question perfectly. I appreciate it. That's all my questions. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kenda.
Just a clarification question for assurances that the. Conditions of approval sixty seven through sixty nine give the city the ability to intervene at any point. If it's determined that there's a traffic impact that. You know, spill, it's specifically the language, if I understand it correctly, is that if there are spillovers beyond what. We anticipate and the concerns that are coming up in this call that the city can order temporary closure and it sounded like the applicant understood that as well. I just wanted to clarify if that's the, if that's the case, Mr. Emira, and. If. I mean, if so, it's, it seems like. With that condition. Parking and traffic, not to mention pointing out some of the other parking designations that could be on the thirteenth street, though personally, if I was working, I would not want to. Make that walk at night. From a gas station or convenience store, it's in some instances of two blocks away to my car. So I just, is that, is that the case with the conditions of approval? I'm sorry for related question.
Well, I, what condition? Do you, do you know what number?
Sixty seven through sixty nine, I believe. Let me see. It's in the transportation section of the conditions of approval, conditions of approval page.
Page eight.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. I don't have page numbers on this document for some reason, but it is sixty seven through, through seventy one, but sixty nine really. Sixty seven through sixty nine. There's cameras that must be installed. The tenant will be responsible for ensuring that vehicles queuing in the drive through do not spill back into the public right away. And sixty nine, the city reserves the right to impose additional restrictions. Which would include temporary closure to mitigate and, and address any impacts like this should they arise. And I just want to understand, or I guess my question really is, what is the extent of that authority for the city to, to, to have? In the instance that just in case, it's worst case scenario and there's a real problem that this site creates. What are the insured assurances that the, that these conditions of approval provide and are they adequate? Is kind of where my, my thinking is going right now. Just to kind of give you an understanding of what I'm really trying to ask.
The. The city can impose additional conditions on this, this application or this project. To remedy the situation. It may not necessarily mean shutting down the business. It may be. Controlling the hours of operation. Maybe requiring that additional. Queuing lanes be provided through the. Gas dispensers. But. They cannot allow the queuing to. Encroach into the public right away. And so they will have to come up with a remedy to address that situation. Whether it's reducing the hours of operation and increasing staff. Having somebody out there taking orders, having somebody out there directing traffic. They just cannot allow the cars to queue within the public right away. You know, it's something that will have to be addressed if that should happen. And I, you know, I don't know what solutions they would come up with, but the bottom line is that they, they cannot allow the cars to. Queue on, on the street, you know, once it becomes the, to the tension of the, the city, the city has to take action on it. So.
Commissioner, just to more clearly answer the question, I think you were wondering, does the condition sixty seven through sixty nine. Allow the city, the jurisdiction to go back and reevaluate? The use if it becomes a problem with traffic and the answer is yes. And we, those conditions were worded as such. Because even though the traffic study doesn't anticipate. That there's going to be any traffic impacts. We all know that sometimes studies are not actual reality. And so we did want to add those additional conditions in there. To ensure that we still reserve the right to be able to control the traffic to ensure that there is no adverse impacts on Mission or the adjacent streets.
Thank you so much. That is my only question and I appreciate you, Mr. Emira and, and Sir La Chacha for, for answering that. I, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you. And I want to further Mr. Akenda's question is, and this might be a really dumb question, but. Are we, the city, are we concerned that we will not be able to take action against the applicant? She not, I would, the conditions, like, are we concerned about the mechanics of that?
I'll jump in here, Commissioner Stevens. No or not, in addition to the conditions of approval. Regulating that, that queuing, if they were to back up in, you know, the queuing into the city street. The city can enforce its, its news, you know, file a nuisance action to enforce its rights. In addition to that, there could be a, you know, the due process rights to revoke, you know, the whole process to revoke their. Permit if, if that becomes a problem and it's persistent. So there's other avenues. This is just one of them and it makes it a little easier.
And the applicant fully understands the importance of complying with the conditions of approval. Because if they don't, there could be a, a pretty severe. Financial risk. Is that, is that clear to the applicant?
Yes, we have gone through the conditions and condition number sixty seven, sixty eight, sixty nine. It has been based on the traffic study and I do understand like. Up to this stage, we diligently work with city. Although the form based code doesn't require any parking, but as per the Harvard municipal code, sixteen parking spaces are required and we are proposing. Nine onsite plus eight dispensers total of seventeen, if we just forget about the drive through. And similarly, whatever the city's transportation engineer. He recommended there were like level of service studies included in the, in the, in the traffic report. So everything we have tried to satisfy, keeping in the post development issues. But yes, as the operations go, I mean, it is good. We brainstormed today. Talked about all the foreseeable issues. And yes, we have to comply with the conditions and we fully understand that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you all for your great questions. Many of my questions have been answered already with your questions, but I do have a few. Like everyone, I'm concerned about the parking and the, the flow through the drive through. And while I appreciate the contingency plan that we might, you might be able to close one of the gas station lanes to take care of some of the overflow parking. I am concerned about that because gas and coffee are basically the same rush hour. So I'm sort of wondering. Who would take precedence? The gas station for wanting to get their revenue during rush hour or coffee, wanting, you know, wanting that revenue. And so. I'm just curious to both the applicant and the staff, like what, who's going to decide that, who's going to make that call and, you know, in that moment?
Yeah, it is a kind of tough question, but yes, we can see. The hours we are going to decide which, which takes precedence. No doubt during peak hours, peak morning hours, office hours. Coffee takes the precedence and we will be shutting off few of the gas pumps. If and when the issue of. Encroaching into the public right of it comes. And during like daytime. No doubt that gas is a crowd puller. So whoever comes and fill up the gas, they will walk into the convenience store and the coffee. And spend some more money inside the stores. So yeah, so it all depends upon the hours, twenty, twenty four hours of the day, what time is. Appropriate and same, same thing is about the employee parking, like at nighttime. We also feel like it is unsafe to walk across the road for them, but at the same time, we, the business at night hours is. It's a pretty low, so it's not that much fast. So yes, at that time, employee can. And, and yeah, so I will, will remain flexible and. Since last year, we are working in city and for the coming so many years, I don't know, we will work with the city.
Thank you. And then, and then my other question along the same lines is, you said you had a lot of intent with Starbucks. And, but I assume Starbucks has all sorts of experts that look at this kind of flow and time of day and how many cars will be queuing. At one point, are they involved in this? I mean, I know, city, the city staff said you have not talked to them, but. If you're designing something without their input at this point. It seems to me like they would understand where the flow would go because. I know I've been to several of the drive throughs. When my kids were younger, I was willing to wait in a very long line for Starbucks because the kids were sleeping in the back and I've, I've scoped them all out. And almost all of the ones I've gone to all wind through a parking center, parking lot. So if there was overflow, you would have large overflow through. The different parking spots. And although that might have been annoying for the shopping center, it certainly wasn't impeding traffic on a busy street like Mission Boulevard. So I'm wondering where Starbucks is in the input of this.
Yes, whatever we are submitting to city, we run through Starbucks. And as mentioned, like the traffic engineer, he, 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 he's a kind of recommended like. Besides eight parks in the creek. We will be having an additional five cars for the peak hours based on the traffic manual or whatever the parameters they imply. So. Because of that, we, we try to accommodate all those thirteen cars in a single creek. But still, I mean, as I mentioned, we are flexible. So we'll work with.
And then if, if it came to the worst case scenarios, Commissioner Kenda was asking about, and the city had to shut them down because. Obviously, Mission can't handle that overflow. It's too busy and there's nothing that can happen on Tennesse. So what would their, what would the liability be for Starbucks? And you and the city, if, you know, they're shut down because they felt like the owner didn't provide the appropriate overflow. I, I guess, I don't know if that's a commission, a question for Joe or the applicant.
So whatever the conditions, I may, I understand like there will be some kind of update in the conditions which are circulated today. So whatever conditions will feel like those are applicable to Starbucks. And right now we have just the letter of intent. So in the final lease, those conditions will be passed out to Starbucks. So, so do we, we don't have to face any legal issues down the lane. So I mean, Starbucks has the flexibility today. If, if they don't want to work on those, somebody else will come up. And but they have to comply with the conditions because we, we cannot take. We, we cannot fight with the city, basically. We have to live.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then I think my last question, there was mentioned that there was a potential, there was a question whether there was going to be outside seating. In front of Starbucks, which would obviously change the parking need. So I was wondering, is that, is, has that, will there be outside seating?
No, please. No sitting.
Okay, great. And then, so just want to make sure, I think I, I think that was everything I had. And then. Okay, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you. With no further questions from the commissioners, let's open the public comment for this item. Mary, do we have anyone looking to make a public comment at this point?
At this time, we have no request to speak, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, and it looks like we have the same, the same attendee waiting and who does not have a question. Okay, I, I'm going to close the. Comment, the public comment period and let us move into commissioner discussion. And it looks like Commissioner Mendel has his hand. And let us move into Commissioner discussion. And it looks like Commissioner Mendel has his hand up first.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Chair. So a few thoughts. First, I like the uses. I, I, you know, an expanded convenience stores is a good thing. The drive-through coffee shop will be very popular. These are, these will definitely get a lot of use from the public, in my opinion. I think the buildings are attractive and well-designed. I, I don't really have a problem with the setback exception from a visual standpoint. I think that the lack of a seating area in the coffee shop is absolutely essential and a very wise decision, whoever made that. Kudos, because you just can't have people coming and hanging out for hours on end and eating up, you know, parking spaces. I do have two concerns. And they, and they over, they overlap, they feed on each other. One is the queue and we've talked about that. You know, at great length through the questions, I think it is inevitable that the queue will be longer than twelve cars, probably every day. Around seven, eight AM every day. And so if nothing is done, it will, in my opinion, spill over onto Mission Boulevard. And so you know, the, the easiest remediation for that would be to have an employee out there saying, all right, when it gets to the sidewalk, you direct the next car to go park. And walk into the store to get their coffee instead of waiting in the queue. Unfortunately, that leads to my second concern, which is that there's only nine parking spaces. And there's going to be six employees and those employees do not have a place to park on the public street, certainly not in front of this business, not across the street to the south, because that's BART parking. And that area is already impacted with overflow parking from the, the housing development across the street from Bard and on Mission Boulevard. They already have people parking on both sides of Mission Boulevard all, you know, throughout the day and night. So it's not like there's a lot of spaces on Mission available for employees. It, it, it is folly to think that employees can use them. So that means that employees will be using six of the nine parking spaces, leaving three for customers. That won't work without mitigation. And so what, what I'm left with, and I'm interested to hear what my colleagues had to say is do, are we comfortable, am I comfortable enough with the authority that the city has to require accommodations, whether it be changes to hours or shutting down pumps or whatever, to make what is a very crowded site work during that morning rush hour, because it's probably the only time it's going to be a problem. Are we comfortable enough with the authority that we have to make changes? Or, or is it better to push back a little and say, look, just find a way to have sixteen plus parking spaces. And if that means you don't get to expand the convenience store and add a coffee shop with a drive-through, then maybe you gotta pick one or the other because your site is not big enough to do both. I'm honestly very interested to hear what my colleagues have to say. I could go either way. So I'll, I'll leave it at that and look forward to your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Kendall.
Appreciate those, those comments, Commissioner Mendel. I actually was going to speak to what I think you're, you're asking about, because I, my opinion on this is that I understand there are going to be some impacts and I also recognize the kind of lens that I bring to this because I really don't drive often and I never use drive-throughs. So I am, in my personal opinion, slightly deferential in this conversation to the experiences of other of my colleagues. Just so everybody knows, but I, I do, I do think that, to answer your question directly, Commissioner Mendel. Condition sixty-nine, when I read that, seems to impose the enough flexibility for determinations to be made by the Public Works Director at their satisfaction and the Transportation Manager to ensure that a, a problem does arise, that we will take care of it. I, I, I tend to, you know, think that there are ways to mitigate and to support this kind of entrepreneurship, which we definitely want in the city. And, you know, I, I would leave it up to you know, the good faith at this point of the owner and my personal opinion and, and the willingness of the city and staff to, to follow up on its condition of approval obligations, should we need to. I, I think the, my real concern on this property is for the employees. I, I do not think in my, in my personal sort of value belief system, that it's appropriate to force employees to park somewhere else. I, I think that that is for me the most challenging of this and, and which makes me somewhat open to your, your point, Commissioner Mendel, about maybe asking the applicant to take another look at this and see what they can do. But I, I, I think if I am, I would only do that basically if the rest of the colleagues on here felt that strongly enough to push that direction. But my, my, I think first order of, of preference or my, my belief and how I think I'll come down on this, but pending to hear others is to approve this project and, and let it play out and see, see what happens and, and put some trust in, in this process and our authority to to, to intervene if necessary. That's, that's my, that's my position right now and I'm subject to change, so willing to hear you guys out.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner O'Kendall. Commissioner Benia.
Thank you, Chair Roche. I, I would love nothing more than a Starbucks to be less than half a mile away from my house. But I also am considering all of the impacts that would come with that. You know, I was running by there a few days ago and there was a car that was honking at a bus because there were problems with the bus stopping in front of the gas station and the car trying to get in the gas station. There was another issue several weeks ago where there was a car coming out of the gas station and there was someone speeding down Mission and the car coming out the gas station wasn't going fast enough. So that created yet another issue. And this is the same gas station that we're talking about expanding convenience store for in a neighborhood that really needs that food because we have a grocery store that's about a half a mile away, that's closing down soon. So this might even become more of a staple for the community to be able to access food. And then you have an overlay of Starbucks there, which like I said, I would love nothing more, but my concern is about the queuing. My concern is about all of the development that's happening along Mission, right? When, when I leave Douglas and I run down towards your house, Al, all you have is development on both sides of it. And large development, high-density developments. So you're gonna have a ton of people, more traffic on Mission and where does everyone want to go in the morning? Starbucks, to get gas. So if we think that, you know, we're going to be able to go and jump in the gas line and leave our car there to go get Starbucks, sure we will. But that means our car is going to be in those nine little stalls that we're including the gas pumps for a lot longer, because now we can do two in one. And now the queuing even becomes longer. And then when you start to look at the compounding traffic impacts of when you're moving down Mission, the only way you're going to be able to access that Starbucks unless you're coming from, you know, the, the kind of, the way of, I would say, Holiday Bowl towards City Hall. You're gonna have to make a U-turn. So you're gonna have people making U-turns, you're gonna have people going up Tennesse and then trying to cut across when they're not supposed to. You're gonna have people parking at this grocery store across the way to walk across the street. And I can guarantee that that's likely going to happen because how everyone wants Starbucks. Where's the nearest Starbucks in, in proximity to where this one's going to be built? Nowhere near there. There's not even a coffee shop near there. And if we're talking about having average, everyday coffee, then we might as well go to the AM and PM across the street because that's not why they're going to go to this gas station. It's going to be for the Starbucks. And to your question, Commissioner Mendel, do I have, you know, I would say, do I have confidence in the city's ability to enforce this requirement? To be quite honest, no, the city lacks enforcement capabilities in a lot of different ways. They lack it in terms of tobacco. They lack it in terms, I mean, the city is short-staffed. We're trying to do a lot with a very small budget. And if we think there's going to be staff enforcing queuing lines at a single gas station, we can't even really enforce other issues broadly across the city. Then I think that that would be something that we all have to more deeply consider. So and then to your point or to our points around the limited, the limited parking spots, six potential employees, this being at such a predominant intersection where people will really kind of do anything to get Starbucks. I've seen people fight in line to get their coffee. It just makes me really ponder, are we trying to do too much with too little space? And maybe not in the right area. So when we start looking at these conditions, like, yeah, it's creating business expansion and retention. But we can't, you know, really answer how many jobs it's going to bring to the city. And then we think about public safety and we think about you know, physical and environmental constraints and we're all kind of acknowledging that there might be potential and there's likely to be potential issues on Mission when we're, we've already created a lot of congestion by virtue of high-density housing that we're building, which obviously makes this a very sweet spot for Starbucks. I would really like us to rethink how we might be able to use the space to still be able to potentially serve Starbucks, but maybe not do so much at one time. Or not, not even at one time, but do so much in so little space. Those are my comments. Thank you, Commissioner Roche.
Thank you, Commissioner Benia. Commissioner Ali Sullivan.
Thank you. So I, I think I'm going to be differing with a lot of the comments tonight because I'm going to start by saying I'm not concerned with the parking situation here. And the reason I'm not concerned with the parking is, in my belief structure, life is about incentives. And you incentivize behavior in the environment you build. And this site is going to incentivize either walking to the facility or driving in a drive-through. As close as I am, I also actually run by this corner every day. So I, I understand what my colleague is mentioning as to the location and, and the traffic. However, you know, my initial thought was I'd like to go there and sit down at the Starbucks. That's why I asked a question about the seating inside. Recognizing that the intent here is that this facility is not for people to sit down and hang out at the coffee shop, it's to get it and go. That to me means that if I'm going to the Starbucks, I'm going to know that I should not expect a parking spot because they're limited. And that's a behavior that I'll be trained on the first time I try to go there and realize that there wasn't a parking spot available. The other concern that, that, that I have with the commentary is that the, the discourse so far is assuming the absolute worst-case scenario as a constant. And there are spaces on the plan here for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, very squished in cars in the drive-through lane. If I'm driving by any drive-through, I don't care how bad I want Starbucks, if I see eight cars in the drive-through lane, I'm gonna keep on going, right? I, I'm not going to sit in a long line like that. And so the amount of time that you might have the eight cars that are wrapped around the building, plus maybe three or four more in the rest of the space adjacent to the, the gas pumps. I don't see people waiting. I don't see people lining up on Mission Boulevard because there's an AC Transit bus that's a lot bigger than your car beeping its horn at you. I'm not convinced that this is going to create a nightmare scenario for, for that corner. And if there is congestion, it'll be at very, very limited times of the day. The other concern I, I have is Commissioner Mendel, you mentioned that the six employees are going to take the parking spots. I, I'd have to disagree there because if the employer in this case makes clear to his employees that you can't park in the parking spaces, the employee is not going to expect to get a parking space every day in front of the store. I think it's good practice to not have your employees parking in the spaces that are, that should be reserved for the customers that are coming to the store. The other thing I'll mention on my runs as well, I often see people getting off of their shift at the Burger King, that's at the corner of industrial and Mission, walking, right? I see them in their uniforms. I would be very surprised if the Starbucks hires someone from miles and miles and miles away that's driving there every day to come and work at Starbucks. I think the more likely outcome is that you get people that live in the neighborhood that end up working at the store that probably can very easily walk or take AC Transit or take BART. So all of that combined leads me to not have a, you know, a doomsday impression of what this parking situation is going to be here. On top of the fact that, again, the site is designed to disincentivize parking and/or vehicular traffic. I'm actually quite impressed with how the, the limited site was able to actually include all three aspects here. And, you know, I'll end by saying as someone who's lived in this vicinity for the last, on and off for the last twenty years. I, I'm sure the applicant would agree with this. It, it's currently an eyesore. The facility with the car stacked up outside of the repair space at the terminus of these two main streets, it doesn't look good, right? It's not a great look for the area. And as the rest of the Mission Boulevard corridor starts to develop and we're getting some, some very attractive projects and, and infrastructure put into place, I think this project will go a long way to improving the visual aesthetic of the area as well as services for people that live in the adjacent area. So I, I'm actually very excited about this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Ali Sullivan. Let's see, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you. So I'm going to agree with Mr. Ali Sullivan. I think that a lot of really great planning went, was completed by the applicant as well as the city staff. There was a detailed traffic engineering study completed. It's an ambitious use of the site. I think we have great conditions of approval that will help us regulate how this is used. I'm hopeful that the city will enforce these. I, my fear really is for the applicant. I mean, I think the applicant is, is really biting off a lot and I would be concerned that if things don't go well, that there would be a real challenge to the investment here. So while I, I'm fully in approval of this project, I, I think the applicant could think about a few things that could potentially make this a little easier and a little more accessible. And I think one of the really simple things to do is on the north side of the gas pumps where there's twenty-five feet clear, they could nudge over the median a little bit or to provide a little bit more space for vehicles to move in that location there. I realize that looks like a buyer retention area there or something along those lines. But on a site this tight, a foot or two could even help. I also noticed on the east side of the site, there's a tier of retaining wall that has elevations that looks like getting up to about ten feet, plus a, a real big slope there. That bottom wall is probably going to be a very robust retaining wall because it's holding fairly large surcharge slope. I wonder if the applicant had considered doing something like a, a one-wall solution there, maybe a soil nail wall. If they did one near the property line, that would free up a lot of space right there for parallel parking. That could provide parking for employees. And then the one other thing I was just really curious about is if building B on the south side, where we have the city soil nail wall easement for the retaining wall that's right there, it really would have been nice to be able to wrap the city wall into the site wall, which would have opened that whole south facade of building B. And it would have shifted building B to the south and potentially could have come up with probably some more space for building B, probably some space for parking and less walls on the, on the east side of building B. So I'm not a fan of doing, changing any of the conditions of approval or putting any requirements on the applicant. I just would encourage the applicant to think about these as, as flexibility to protect their, their investment. And I'd like to thank the applicant for preparing such detailed plans. It really makes it easy to understand. So thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Let's see, Commissioner Goldstein.
Thank you, Chair. I had to laugh with the use of the term doomsday scenario from Commissioner Ali Sullivan, but you know, honestly, I, I find myself agreeing with the sentiment that just judging by my own behavior, when I go by that Starbucks near Costco and the other one that's near eight-eighty off industrial, that if it looks like there's a lot of cars there already, I just go by. I mean, there's, there's always another coffee shop to go to. Usually another Starbucks not very far away. In fact, I understand that there's another Starbucks being considered at a site about a half mile away. A little more than a half mile away over by the Burger King, across the street from there in the Holiday Bowl. Nothing's been firmed up. I don't even know if I'm supposed to be talking about it, but that's the rumor. And so, you know, just judging from my own behavior, I, I just really don't see that doomsday scenario really developing there. And I also have to disagree with Commissioner Benia. I I, I, I think by virtue of the fact that we find ourselves in these meetings and following statements from city council, we find ourselves hearing about statements from city council, uh, we find ourselves hearing about issues more often than, you know, the regular public citizens who aren't involved in this. And that might give you the impression that there's a whole bunch of problems around the city that aren't being taken care of. Um, but I actually find the opposite to be true. I find city staff and, and the enforcement people to be on top of things and they know what's going on and they're working with, excuse me, landowners and developers and, and, and so forth. And I admire the fact that they take a libertarian approach to enforcement, meaning, um, you know, they'll send letters, they'll talk to them, they'll see if they can, uh, arbitrate some resolution without, um, you know, swinging that heavy arm. And, and so I, I really do think that it's okay. It's going to be fine. I also like the idea that that corner is going to get some development. Um, the more development in that area, uh, the more it will attract further development, which is good for business, it's good for housing, uh, it's good for employment. And I think, uh, for all of those reasons, uh, I am, uh, uh, in favor. Um, and also I don't know if the neighboring business, Sadagar, uh, they've got a pretty large parking lot and the business neighboring to them. Um, I know you can't just tell your employees to go park on somebody else's private property, um, but you might be able to work out some equitable rent agreement with them. And they're literally just across the street. So that might be one way of, uh, preserving those, those parking spots. And then further to that, um, as some businesses do, when business is really booming, and I, I hope it does for this applicant, um, that, uh, they will set up a, a curbside pickup separately from the drive through. So the drive through people order their drinks and then they wait in the drive through. But the pickup people order online or phone in and then they pull up to the pickup spot. Somebody hands them their order and it's off they go. So I really do feel like there's, you know, ample opportunity, um, that are benefiting the local community and ample opportunity to mitigate, uh, any potential downside from this. So for those reasons, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's really interesting discussion this evening, I think from really good perspectives. Um, I, I am also inclined to, um, to go with the staff report on this. I, I do have reservations about the queuing, but I, I feel like we've sort of discussed that and everybody seems to acknowledge and know that this is going to be a problem. And the applicant is aware of what he's going to have to do in order to mitigate that, as well as communicating that to Starbucks, who will have to take this risk about what the, like we said, the doomsday scenario will be. Um, and I, you know, and it's true, it's true. We, uh, we have to talk doomsday scenario because we need to know what the, what the, um, problems might be on Mission Boulevard. But I, I think, I mean, just from a Starbucks user, like we're, we're talking about morning rush hour. We're talking about 3:00 PM rush hour. People want their afternoon, um, coffee fix. It's not really just this one rush hour if you're a Starbucks drive through user as I have been. Um, however, I, I think that, um, that there are mitigation things that can be done. And, um, and I think that they maybe should try this and see what happens. Um, I think the city attorney has made clear that there is a remedy. If, um, if this doesn't work out and the city has, um, remedies to go in there and, um, and, you know, take care of the situation in the long term. I mean, I do think, um, you know, in the moment when there's a queuing problem and people are, are going to queue on Mission, I don't think like that moment won't necessarily be solved by the city because you're not going to have staff running out there. You're not going to have the gas station attendants running out there. It's just gonna queue up. And I, and I think if that really quickly becomes a problem, then obviously there's going to have to be a quick solution for that. I do agree with one thing, uh, Commissioner Goldstein said that I think because the parking is so desperate at this site, that I, I think it will, um, behoove the, um, applicant to talk with neighboring businesses to have parking at locations, either the grocery store across the street or even the neighboring business who are, businesses that are not using their parking lots at night, especially for those overnighted employees at the convenience store that we don't want walking. Um, you know, we want to worry about their safety. So I think if he can get creative and, um, how he's, um, where he's parking his staff, that I think that's gonna, um, be, I think there's incentive for him to do that so that those nine parking spaces can be freed up. Um, let's see. I think, and I don't, and then I don't know from the city's perspective, I mean, can the bus stop be moved? I mean, so we don't create a hazard with people waiting for the bus or hazard with people getting, you know, stopping behind the bus, waiting to queue in. I, I seems to me that's a, um, that's going to have to be a city issue. But I, I, I mean, I guess on balance, I would like to see this corner developed. I think it's going to be an attractive addition to the corner. I think with everybody fully aware of what they're getting into, I am inclined to support the, the staff's recommendation on this. Um, and with that, now is the time I'd like to entertain a motion if we have one.
Commissioner Roche, I had a comment. I think a few other commissioners do as well.
Okay, sure. Thank you. You're ready. Didn't look. Okay, Commissioner Benia.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Roche, i- if this were to move forward in its current condition, would you and the fellow commissioners consider with this significant expansion that's coming, some sort of trash cleaning up or adopt a block initiative that would be required as condition of approval as we've done with other applicants that have asked for things like this?
I mean, I like that idea, but maybe we can wait till there's a motion and then add that to the motion. If that's, um, something that, um, other commissioners are interested, does anyone? Uh, did you have any other comment? Or do you want me to ask if anyone else has comments on that? Okay. Did anyone else have, you're going to raise your hand just if you have a comment on that? Commissioner Mendel, go next to you.
Okay, uh, not a comment on, on that, um, suggestion, although, well, I guess it's a good one. A, a question for staff. So is it possible to, um, I'm sorry, somebody had this idea, one of my colleagues, and I forget who. So I, I apologize for not giving you credit. So is it possible to add a condition that requires the, um, that employees be provided with parking onsite or offsite through some sort of contracted agreement? Um, you know, with Sadagar or one of the other neighboring properties. So if they have a place for them to park so that they're not fighting, you know, a half mile up Mission Boulevard to find a parking spot. Is that a condition that we could even include or am I, is that overstepping? And I guess what I, the reason I'm asking is because I could imagine them, the, the applicant, you know, if there's overflow, I could imagine them saying, well, we don't allow our, our employees to park onsite, but they do. Uh, and so we don't, you know, have to, we have nine spaces that are available, so we don't need to mitigate things as much. And if the reality is that no employees are parking onsite, and so you really only have three spaces available, that makes it a little bit easier for the city to have a conversation about, look, you need to do some serious mitigation here if things end up becoming problematic. Um, and maybe that, you know, could include parking their employees offsite. And if that's a condition right from the get go, then it might simplify things. Long-winded question, I apologize, but maybe Mr. Brick can answer.
Uh, yeah. So thanks, Commissioner Mendel. It's a little weird to say.
It's weird to hear.
Yeah, I can see you kind of, uh, confused every time someone says it. But yeah, I, I think we want to stay away from interfering with the business relationship, like addressing specifically parking for employees. However, I think it's, um, you know, a, a fair point to make that there are employees and they're going to have to park, park somewhere. So if there's, you know, holistically enough parking spaces, that's, that's, um, of course, something that, um, the commission can discuss and, um, condition this, this approval on.
Thank you. That's it, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kenda.
Thanks. Um, I don't want to, you know, throw too much of a tangent here, but I think one of the reasons that I was most concerned about the, the no onsite parking issue, even though I, I recognize, uh, Mr. Brick, that it does interfere slightly with that business relationship and allowing them to kind of have some arrangement with employee employer, uh, to figure that out. I, I just am concerned about people's safety, you know? Convenience stores, gas stations are pretty liable to be robbed, um, to be the subject of different types of, of property and, and violent crimes. Um, and so are the employees there and having them possibly walk to a different location. Um, imagining, you know, late night closing up at the gas station. Like there are just instances where I think that you're asking for, um, uh, you know, unfortunately, uh, you know, issues of safety and security that I think in my mind are, are, are foremost. I have family members who have worked and are retiring from jobs as convenience store, you know, managers. Uh, I'm, and like, it's not an easy job. So, you know, having these additional kinds of demands, I just, I, I, it is not personally, uh, enough right now to, to warrant me to vote against this project, excuse me. Um, but I, I do want to elevate that and I want to elevate Commissioner Stevens' comments. I would really urge the applicant, um, to think, uh, put in that little bit more expense if you can, uh, to find some more ways to squeeze parking out of this, out of this lot. Um, I think, uh, really addressing that issue and, and supporting your employees i- is really, really significant. Um, and I think would, would maybe some of the, you know, uh, mediate against some of these concerns that, that we have. Ultimately, um, I'm willing to, to, you know, motion for, uh, to put up a motion if we're done with comments. Um, and, uh, in, in support of staff recommendations on, on all, all parts, uh, variance, the, the condition of use, uh, permit, uh, process and, and, um, uh, and just if everybody's ready for that.
Yeah, let's make sure, um, did anyone have any more comments before we move back to motions? Um, Commissioner Mendel, did you, did you have another comment? You put your hand up.
Well, as a point of order, Madam Chair, a motion is on the floor. You can't, um, it, it has to be dealt with and then we can.
Well, he, I think what Commissioner Kenda said, if we're ready to make a motion, then he has much he's going to make. So I was, has qualified that. I wanted to.
Okay, okay. I withdraw.
Thank you.
Chair, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, I, I also wanted to go back. I had one more comment, actually, I wanted to go back to. If we were to condition on, on the applicant, say adding two more parking spaces, Joe, is that something we could change at this point or, or would that completely change the design?
I can't speak to the design. Uh, I, I defer to staff on that. But, um, yeah, if you think parking's inadequate, I think that is something that you can address.
Okay.
If I could just intervene, just a, just a quick thought. I know there's been a lot of questions about employee parking. I know, um, as of recent, we've been really trying to encourage, um, uh, employers adopting a TDM program for their employees to incentivize them to get out their car. Uh, I know, uh, that this project is providing, you know, uh, significant, I think, uh, bicycle racks to accommodate up to six bicycles. Um, that may be an option if, if the, a commission feels like that would be a, you know, plausible alternative. But I just wanted to throw it out there that, that, that has been, um, those, those, that TDM programs have worked successfully. I don't know specifically if the applicant would have any concerns with that in this case or if that was studied as part of the traffic analysis. But we frequently find that that's one option to help augment reduced demand.
All right. Thank you for that, Jeremy. Okay, let's go back to, let's see, Zachary, did you like, who wanted to introduce a motion at this point?
Yep. Um, if there are no further comments from the commissioners, um, maybe we can, I, I'm happy to entertain a motion. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll move the item, uh, with staff recommendations, uh, as supported, uh, with all of the required findings um, in each of the pieces, uh, without having to read all that. I, I moved that item. And I would add, uh, a question, I suppose, in this motion for Commissioner Mendel. Uh, would you like to add an amendment on a condition's approval for the charging stations? And I would be amenable to that. So I'll add that in with, with an additional, um, uh, condition of approval to require the two charging stations that the applicant already committed to, to building, uh, including on the, on the property. And then if there are any other, I'm open to friendly amendments as well, if I get a second, of course.
As amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Okay, second by Commissioner Stevens. Okay, let's have discussion on the motion. Um, let's see, Commissioner Mendel.
Sorry to speak again, but, uh, to, to Mr. Brick. So he, he, I asked a question a moment ago about requiring parking for employees and you kind of said, no, we can't do that. But then a second ago, you said we could require more parking onsite, uh, as a condition of approval tonight, correct? And so one, one could imagine then, uh, uh, an amendment that says they must provide an additional six employee parking spaces in addition to the nine, either physically onsite or, you know, through contract offsite. Or no, is that not, again, we, is that pushing it?
Uh, I, I think that would probably be okay. Uh, you know, i- i- you're tying the parking spots to the use, correct? So you're saying that this use is going to generate a little bit more parking, which has been discussed here today. So, you know, i- if you required six more additional spots, but they could be offsite if they're for employees, then I think, you know, the wording of that would, would be sufficient to, to carry weight.
Thank you. And so do we need the applicant to give us a nod on that tonight or can we add that regardless of their?
Yeah, it would be great to hear from the applicant if, uh, they're able to accommodate that. Um, I don't, you know, it's obviously a condition of approval, so you can require it, but it's always great to hear.
Mr. Singh, are you available to comment on that?
Uh, yes, please. Uh, uh, as I mentioned in the beginning, I'm sorry, uh, like, right now, the design complies with all the applicable codes. Uh, I mean, we are going a kind of extra mile, um, besides the form based code for the Mission Boulevard. We are also complying with the Harvard Municipal Code. Uh, and additionally, um, I would like to say like, the city is targeting towards a sustainable development and mass transit. And I think our project, uh, is, is designed in that line. Besides complying with the codes, we have six bike parking spaces. We have the AC Transit, we have Bart Station pretty close and the housing development is coming up, uh, here and there along the Mission Boulevard. Uh, and I mean, uh, we have been working on the site for last, uh, two and a half years. And I believe like every inch of the site is, um, is, uh, designed as per the code requirements, as per the engineering, uh, city's engineering department requirements. Uh, for instance, like Commissioner Stevens was mentioning about, um, redesigning the retaining walls. Uh, we tried to do that, but, uh, it was rebutted by the city because city doesn't allow more than six feet visible space on the ten walls. Uh, so that's why we are stepping those retaining walls. Like it has been, uh, two of the retaining walls are visible. Uh, the third one is, uh, uh, west of the driveway and the fourth one is right, uh, underneath the building, A foundations. So that's how we are trying to accommodate, uh, the city's requirement, like, no doubt.
Okay, so you're, you're kind of going far afield from the question that was answered. So if you could just stick to the question asked, I'd appreciate it.
Um, at this moment, um, I would say like we are, uh, complying with the code and it is really hard to accommodate any more parking spaces. Yes, if city, uh, city, uh, is ready to give us some room in, in regards to the code, like we are requesting variance for the setback. So similarly, if we will be allowed for a variance in the retaining wall height, yes, uh, in the drive through, we can carve out, uh, maybe three parking spaces for the employees. Because, uh, at that moment, once the employee parks there, he's not in a rush to get out of the space when the drive through is busy. So that is, uh, the only space which I can think about right now.
All right. Thank you. So, um, thank you. So I still have the floor. So I'll just, um, I will just comment that it's, um, kind of ironic to hear an applicant who owns a gas station and is proposing a drive through coffee shop, talk about how this is accommodating mass transit. Um, that's, that's, um, pretty obviously, uh, not very on point. Um, and I'll, I'll, I will leave it at that. I'm going to propose that amendment that we require an addition, six additional parking spaces onsite. And if the applicant can't provide that, that they secure those employee, six additional, uh, employee parking spaces, you know, nearby and offsite. And I hope the maker and the secondary will accept that. If they do, I'd be happy to support the motion.
All right, Commissioner Kenda, where are you on that amendment?
Uh, just to understand and kind of in the, in the debate on that amendment, um, I think I'm, I'm open to it. I think that some ideas, uh, I'm going to. I think, I'm open to it. I think that some ideas, I'm going to obviously feel comfortable leaving it to the applicant to figure this out. And maybe the city can come up with some, staff can come up with some suggestions if the applicant is struggling to find parking offsite. But, you know, it could be a number of different ways. And I think, you know, Commissioner Goldstein mentioned one such possibility for kind of looking at some other sites away. There could be, you know, kind of validating parking passes, the TDM proposed, like different kinds of proposals you could make, bike racks, of course, paying for bus passes. There could be a number of different ways that the owner could mitigate on that. So I'm willing to accept that amendment, that friendly amendment to the motion that Commissioner Mendel proposed.
And Commissioner Goldstein?
Well, can I ask a question?
Sure. Yeah, we're having a discussion on the motion, so yes.
Okay. Commissioner Mendel, are you suggesting this part of the amendment be a requirement upfront that they either provide the parking or have some contracted parking available? Or are you saying that the contracted parking could be a future mitigation? So are you going to require that upfront as a condition of approval or?
Yes.
Okay, I think.
That's what I'm proposing.
Because although what you said is very on point about, you know, little inconsistency there about, please drive here and get your gas for driving some more and then drive through our restaurant and, you know, pick up some more stuff and then drive to wherever you're going. I get that, but I kind of like the idea of trying out the transportation idea. Right? So they're not allowed to park, but I also like the idea that as a mitigation event, that if the parking situation is onerous, that we could then use that enforcement lever to get them to negotiate parking with one of their nearby businesses. Would you be open to making that change to your amendment?
I think that just got a little complicated. Commissioner Mendel?
Yeah, I don't, it is unclear to me how to even craft a language to achieve what I think you're implying. So.
You know, can I add in, did I hear the applicant say that he could provide three extra spaces on site, but that was the most he was willing to do? Did I hear that from you, Mr. Singh?
Yeah, it's a, we will, if we will be allowed, allowed a variance, warrant an exception in the retaining wall height, yes, then we can accommodate three parking spaces for the employees. And another input which I can commit is we can put, there will definitely, there will be, we will having an employee locker. And on that locker, we can post a sticker, like the health department posts stickers on the hand sinks. So we can post a sticker as per the city instructions, like the employees are entitled for a pass.
Yeah. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Singh. Did you say that you're willing to accommodate three extra spaces? So then there would be nine spaces, nine plus your three employee spaces?
Yes, if we get the variance in the retaining wall height.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, Commissioner Mendel, would that change it? So he's saying he'll accommodate three more spaces for staff on site and then we could do three.
No, because, sorry, no, because what he's saying is he'll do that if we give up the city easement on that retaining wall and completely redesign the, the retention system for the hillside. And that is not something that I'm qualified.
Okay, I apologize. Yeah, I misunderstood that. Okay, let's go back to you clarifying your amendment with Commissioner Goldstein.
My amendment, I think, is clear. And it was, it was the crafting of what Commissioner Goldstein was suggesting that is unclear to me. So if you want to take a stab at language, you can, but.
So, Mr. Brick, can you help me out here? We're contemplating some way of using our enforcement mechanism to mitigate the parking situation rather than necessarily requiring it upfront.
I see what you're saying, but I think Commissioner Mendel wants to require the parking spaces upfront unless they're, you know, onsite, unless they're for employees and they can, then they could locate them offsite, which, you know, if you, on the other hand, I think are suggesting that we should not have that condition now. And that's just a possible future mitigation measure if there is a problem.
That's what I'm thinking. So if I could, one way that I.
Hold on, would you mind, Commissioner Kenda, I just want to make sure. Commissioner Goldstein, so are you saying you don't accept that amendment as proposed by Commissioner Mendel?
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a, an alternative.
Who is the secondar?
Commissioner Goldstein is the secondar and that's why, yeah, Commissioner Kenda is the first, so. Wait, maybe, okay, maybe I can try this. Commissioner Kenda, did you want to change your motion slightly in order to?
I wanted, so we're still debating this potential amendment to the amendment. That's what's on the floor. So for me, what I'm thinking about in finding a middle way here is that this additional condition, this condition is just on the applicant to make, to essentially have a plan, to have a designated plan for getting those additional parking spots. And I think what's key is should the employees require them? I think, you know, it may not be the case that every employee is going to be driving to work and I, you know, maybe that's the truth. So if they do, though, I do think that upfront, those six spaces have to be identified to be provided for at least up to the number of employees that are employed at the location. I don't think it's, I hear Mr. Goldstein's point, Commissioner Goldstein's point, that the conditions of approval, in my view, like allow for the flexibility to create that mitigation, that mitigating circumstance later. But if I'm understanding, Commissioner Mendel, and where I think my view also lies is that there has to be some kind of proactive step here to ensure that those parking spaces are identified, or at least that there are, like those transportation supports are identified to mitigate the impact that we have on parking.
And, and. Okay, so let's talk about that, that identified. Does that mean that if he goes to his neighbors and asks them if they're willing to sell them some parking, if he needs it, and he gets that in writing or email or whatever form, does that satisfy the requirement?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, that sounds right. Nodding his head. Okay, then I'm okay with that.
And I think what we can leave that then too is that, you know, it'll be still at the discretion of the transportation manager and the public works director at whatever point, should, you know, should there come up an issue and complaints with the queuing and the parking, then, you know, we could, we could address that. And at that point, there would be, it would be, you know, there would have to be some kind of proof that this has all been handled. And maybe in advance, before the building occupancy permits and stuff are established, that that kind of piece of writing has to be already obtained. And I think that is, that is the intention of the motion as I understand it.
All right, okay, so I just, Commissioner Mendel, did you want to clarify your?
So I, so I wanted to make sure, so the amendment that I made was just accepted as I understood it. And I want to make sure that staff, especially Mr. Brick, is clear on that because you're going to have to write the actual language of it. Is it, is it, is it clear what we're, what we just added to the motion to staff?
The only clarification I would like to have is, I think Commissioner Kenda has been mentioning alternative TDM management strategies. So is that part of the motion?
No.
No, okay.
Not required, just, just, I was throwing those in as a sort of examples of explanation. Should that have to, you know, whatever the applicant can find for identifying parking, I think can be satisfied of the judgment of the city on that condition.
Okay, so the, as I understand it, and Jeremy, please jump in since you will be, you know, key in enforcing this. The condition of approval would be to provide six additional parking spaces onsite. However, if there, those, if there are sites identified for employees offsite that are nearby and some clarification on what is meant by nearby, whether it's within a mile, you know, some sort of, you know, objective standard for staff.
I think an eighth of a mile would be reasonable. That would cover all the surrounding businesses we've been mentioning.
Okay, then, so if they did that, identified six sites.
Secure, not just identified, but you could identify six parking spaces on the street, secured through contrast is what I'm talking about.
Right, right. Then they don't have to build them onsite.
Yep.
Okay, I'm clear.
Thank you, Mr. Brick, for helping with that.
Okay, all right, thanks. And so let's, so we have a motion on the table, accepting the staff's approval with amendments that the two charging stalls are designate, right, as the applicant has said that there will be. And the amendment that six additional spots will be secured onsite preferably, well, onsite or offsite, depending on how they can secure those spots. Okay, so let's see, Ali Sullivan, let's continue the discussion on that amendment, that motion.
First off, I think it's very clear to anyone who looks at the map, there is no way that the applicant is going to magically come up with six additional spots on the site. And so to make an amendment to this conditional, to add a condition that they identify six sites, six spaces onsite or offsite, does not make any sense to me because it's very clear that there's, there's no universe in which six additional parking spots are going to be created on this site. The second thought on that is if you require them to have six spots for all employees, you are going to get six people who drive their cars there. You're incentivizing the use of vehicles. And so again, I'm not supportive of this idea that, that we should be dictating how the employer manages their employees. I've worked at many jobs where I knew that there was not parking, so I had to take part. I'm not clear why we feel the need to provide a parking spot to every single person that's going to potentially be working at the Starbucks. It's very confusing to me here.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Stevens?
I agree with Mr. Ali Sullivan. The applicant is the one assuming the risk here. I don't believe that we should provide or require them to provide six employee spaces. The applicant had just mentioned that they could tuck three additional spaces to the east of a building and not impact the city's easement if we granted them a variance in retaining wall height. I really think what we should do is provide the applicant the flexibility to provide those three additional spaces if they feel it warrants them and grant them a variance from the city's wall height easement.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Okay, let's see, let's go back. Commissioner Bania?
Thank you. Commissioner Kenda, the maker of the motion, would you mind also if it's okay with the applicant adding an amendment that they adopt a block or do some kind of trash pickup because I, that, the place is a mess in front of it?
So you're proposing a friendly amendment to that as well?
Yeah, friendly amendment, whatever. Yeah, sure.
I think that's acceptable. And I have some additional comments on Commissioner Sullivan and Stevens said in just a moment when it's my turn.
Would the secondar of the motion accept that?
Yes.
Thank you. No further comments, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bania. I mean, at this point, I know there's more discussion. Should we have, I guess I need to know procedurally because I'm new at this. Can we take a vote on this? Or do we take a vote in the amendments? Or do we take a vote on the motions on the table and then have further discussion after that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry. So the, the motion that's on the table, you know, with the friendly amendment, since the, since it's, you know, the first and the second have adopted that, that is the motion that's out there. So once you call for, you know, the end of debate, then you would vote on that, all as one package. So, does that clarify?
Yeah, thank you. That does clarify. I just wanted to see, because it looks like the maker of the motion, Zachary, did you have something you want to add at this point? Because there's lots of hands up still.
There are additional comments and I want to give those folks the ability to speak and just wait.
Okay, well, okay, then let's just, let's, Commissioner Goldstein, did you want to add anything else you had your hand up to?
Yeah, just, just about the parking. So I don't think our amendment says that he has to have a, you know, the six spots reserved and he's got a payment commitment that he needs to make. What we're saying is that he's worked it out with the businesses nearby that if he needs three on this side or three on that side or six total here and there, that he's worked that out and he's got it in writing. Whether, whether the agreement says that he is paying every month in perpetuity or it says only if needed and only if needed during these hours, that's up to him. We just want to make sure that he's got parking available if it's needed. It's a good safety requirement at the very least. But we're not actually forcing them to build six parking spaces or to pay for them if they're not being used. I think that's the most reasonable accommodation that we can make under these circumstances. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I think we're ready to, Commissioner Bania, did you want to chime in one more thing? You had your hand up still.
Who?
Commissioner Bania.
Yes. I'm sorry, what was that, Commissioner Roche?
Oh, you had your hand up still. I didn't know if you had another comment before we called the vote.
No, I didn't. I stepped away for the restroom. Thank you.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you. And then Commissioner Ali Sullivan, well, that'll be our last comment, then we'll go on to the vote.
Yeah, so Commissioner Goldstein, the way you phrase that amendment is not necessarily how I was understanding it. So first off, can the city attorney clearly reiterate what that amendment is for us? What that language is going to read, how it'll read, sorry.
Sure. So my understanding is that the condition of approval will require six additional parking spaces onsite unless there's some sort of agreement and it could be an option. It could be, you know, we're not getting involved in the form of agreement or whether that's, you know, paid for or not. With a nearby location within an eighth of a mile, that would allow for six parking spots if they're for employee parking.
Now, for the maker of that amendment, I'd ask that we remove the language that specifies that they add six additional spots onsite because we know that's not physically possible.
Yeah, I think if I can be clear about that, I don't necessarily, I was not thinking about it being adding additional parking spaces, but either he has to allow some employees to park onsite, right? That's what I was thinking of, or because as we've determined already that he can't add additional parking, so.
Well, let's clarify that because I don't think that was, Commissioner Mendel, can you clarify your intent on that?
Yeah, Mr. Brick has it exactly right. And, and to Commissioner Ali Sullivan, there's absolutely room for six more parking spaces onsite. The only reason that they, it doesn't appear to be available is because the convenience store is being enlarged. You could shrink the convenience store and easily add six more parking spaces. There's 26 there now. And he's getting rid of a bunch of them to add additional uses that'll produce additional revenue. But they don't have to be the exact size that he's proposed. So there is absolutely room, in my opinion. And I think the, as Mr. Brick read it, is how I intended it and how it was accepted, I think.
All right, let's, I think you, commissioners, let's go ahead and call a vote for, the motion on the table is to, is that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, site plan review and variance, application 201800093, based on the reports before us and the attached findings and subject to the conditions of approval with the addition of three amendments to clarify that two, two charging stalls will be secured, that six additional spots will be secured onsite or off, depending on what, what the options are available and that the applicant will agree to adopt a block in order to keep that area clean. And if that, does that sound right, Joe, the motion that we're making?
Yes, did you get the two EV charges?
Yes, yes. Okay, Mary, can you go ahead and call that vote?
Sure, thank you. If I can quickly clarify, the second was Commissioner Stevens, correct?
It was Commissioner Goldstein.
Goldstein, okay, thank you. Commissioner Ali Sullivan?
For a question for the city attorney here, because I'm actually a little bit conflicted here and I'm not sure how to manage this. I'm supportive of the project, but I'm not supportive of the amendment that's been taken. Uh, I'm, I'm supportive of the project, but I'm not supportive of the amendment that's been taken. And so I understand you have to vote on the motion at hand. If I vote on the motion at hand, is there, can the record show that the reason that I'm voting no is because of that amendment that's being placed on it? I feel like it's been, I mean, in some ways hijacked here a little bit.
Yes, that, I mean, that is noted now on the record, so.
Okay.
Uh, i- if, you know, if you voted no against this motion, but you're supportive of the project, if this motion fails, you know, the floor will be open for another motion.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ali Sullivan, your vote, please.
Can you come back? Wow, no, you can't.
What, what, what's the issue you're having with your vote? Do you want us to share it, so maybe we can all benefit from it?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, the, the, it's the discussion we've been having. I, I don't, uh, I don't think that we need to be dictating the parking at the spot in the way that we are. And so to place this additional requirement on the applicant, I think, is excessive and unnecessary. I think the market will dictate, uh, that the market will bear what the market will bear, right? Like the, the, it, parking will sort itself out. If there's not a spot for me as an employee, I'm not, either not going to keep that job, not going to take the job, or I will take an alternative form of transportation to get there. And so we're assuming that there is no other option but a, a individual car for each individual employee that's going to be working at the site and requiring a parking spot for each of them, which I don't agree with.
I think just to get us back in touch, I think at this point, you know, we have a motion on the table. We have already, and, and although, you know, it's your right to, you know, yea or nay, but we have a first and we have a second that's agreed to it. So, so I think we need to go ahead with this vote.
Uh, yeah, I'll, uh, geez. Uh, I mean, I don't want to slow us down, uh, the project itself, so assuming, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll vote yes with the record noting my concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Benia.
Yes.
Commissioner Goldstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
No, because of the amendment.
Commissioner Okenda?
Yes, and I would just add an explanation, if I may, really quickly, that I think the, the purpose here is not to impose parking, but employee, employer should be responsible, in my view, for, uh, meeting the needs of their employees as we require businesses in the downtown to help accommodate their employees with parking, parking structures. This is not a new phenomenon, it's not a new requirement. This is just something to look after the employees. It's additionally a benefit essentially, um, that the employer should be responsible for. Uh, and that's, that is the purpose of these amendments, and that is also why I, I support with yes, uh, in favor of the amendments and the motion.
Thank you, Chair Roach?
Yes.
The motion passes with six ayes and one no vote.
Thank you. Thank you, so we have a motion that's passed with six ayes and one no. And that, so the motion carries. And we can move on to our next item. Thank you, everyone, for that great discussion. And let's move on to the next item, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Commissioner Roach, I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Benia, do I have a second?
I second.
Second, Commissioner Kenda, you have a second. All right, Mary, can you, can we call a vote for them?
I'm sorry, there was one, I submitted one correction in writing. Commissioner Benia was referred to as Chair Benia. Can we, can we incorporate that correction to the, into the minutes, into the motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Mendel. Mary, did you get that?
I did, thank you, I'll make sure that correction is made.
Okay. Thank you. Let's call the vote on the minutes.
Commissioner Ali Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Benia?
Aye, thank you, Mary.
Commissioner Goldstein?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Okenda?
Yes.
And Chair Roach?
Yes. Thank you, and the minutes pass. Let us move on, do we have any reports from staff?
Good evening, no, no, we have no reports, uh, this week. Just as a highlight for the next, uh, planning commission agenda, we have two items that we have scheduled for the meeting on the twenty-second of April. We have a noise ordinance and general plan amendment. And we also have the annual CIP, uh, program that we'll be presenting to the commission.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any commissioner announcements? Nope, I just wanted to welcome Al, our Commissioner Mendel again, and it's, it's good to have a, a full commission. And, um, I look forward to working with you and everyone, and I think that's it. I am going to call this meeting adjourned, it's nine thirty-five, and I want to thank everyone for the great discussion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate all of you, um, and, and you're, you're bringing your, your perspectives and voices to this discussions. We're a good team, and, you know, we have some disagreements, but we're all, we work through them and, and I really appreciate you all. Welcome, Commissioner Mendel.
All right, thanks, everyone, everyone have a good evening.